All right, it is 5:30 and I will call this meeting to order. Everyone will please stand for the presentation of the flag and the pledge. The presentation of the flags will be by the Acadiana Veterans Honor Guard. All right, opening comments, Dr. Aguilar?
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Edward J. Sam Accelerated School of Lafayette opened its doors on Monday, July 17th. Principal Jody Duhon reported that 200 or more students have registered and are attending one or both sessions. The ribbon-cutting ceremony for Edward J. Sam Accelerated School of Lafayette will be Wednesday, August 2nd at 11:00 a.m. Parents and students of Edward J. Sam, staff, board members in the community are invited to attend. There will also be a private tree planting dedication the following day with the family of Ed Sam. This week, the LPSS staff sponsored the leadership conference for approximately 300 principals, assistant principals, instructional leaders, central office, and pupil appraisal staff. The conference began Monday, July 24th and concluded today. Nationally recognized keynote speakers Paul Bernabe and Willow Sweeney delivered a message regarding building relationships with students and parents. The speakers were supported by our Gear Up grant. The conference ended today and all school administrators should be at their schools tomorrow. Thank you to the LPSS staff that presented during the conference. This Friday, July 28th, over 150 new teachers will take part in the LPSS teacher induction program at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. The day will begin with motivational speaker Coach Hudspeth, followed by topics regarding human resources, risk management, and insurance. On Monday and Tuesday, July 31st and August 1st, the LPSS teacher induction will continue at the Bayou Church Retreat Center for academic and administrative topics. A big day is arriving on August 1st. Principal Catherine Cassidy and the LPSS staff will receive the much anticipated keys to Southside High School. There is considerable work to be done to get the furniture and the books and the instructional materials into the classrooms. We will be working nonstop over the next several days, making sure those 650 ninth and 10th grade students arrive to a welcome at Southside High School and that they will have classes on the first day, which will be August 9th. The official grand opening ceremony for Southside High School will occur later this fall. And August 3rd will be the district in-service day for all teachers and paraeducators. This is conducted by our academic department staff and August 4th is the optional in-service day for teachers. And then board members and members of the community, please mark your calendar for August 9th as our students head back to school. And that concludes my remarks, Ms. Morris.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. We now have a, oh yes, Mr. Santani?
Dr. Aguilar, do you have an update on when parents can expect the finalized transportation routes to be available for their, so that they can look up where their child needs to be picked up on the first day of school?
Absolutely. The bidding began today with the drivers to establish the driver for each particular route. The information will be uploaded into the necessary database and will be uploaded once again into the portal where parents can type their physical address and that in turn will identify the driver and the route and the route time. We expect all of that to be fully functional no later than Tuesday of next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now have a presentation on the demographic projections. Mr. Hefner?
Wanted to get with you on the projection report. It was part of the project that was one of the components of our comprehensive zoning plan for the pre-K to 12 that we did. The, this report, though, is a preliminary report since our historical data has been based on the current zones as they were through the 2016 school year. The preliminary plan is going to be based on that, the projections. Once we get to 2017, actual data, enrollment data, and I'm going to be updating this report and coming back to the board with the projections based on the new attendance zones. That way, we're actually going to be using hard data as far as which student showed up at which school rather than just an estimate. And based on estimates off an estimate, it's not always the best way to go about it. So, what I want to do is just kind of hit a couple of the high spots for you on the, on the report. Again, we're using our 2016 school years to anticipate the enrollment trends and really that's how we probably need to look at this is basically what are the trends parish-wide that we're looking at? Where is expected to grow and where is expected to decline? And actually, what this is probably going to give you the best viewpoint on is that if you had not done any changes with your zones at all, this is probably what you would be looking at parish-wide as far as issues with the overcapacities and underutilization of some of your facilities. Because it's, a lot of this is not going to be a surprise to you, but at least we have the data to back it up now. What I want to do is go through some of the, what I call the external factors, general population, demographics, a few things like that, because all of those things do have an effect on where kids are going to show up, which schools they go to. That affects those trends. So if you'll see Lafayette from 1900 to 2010 has grown substantially. No real surprise there, but it has grown a lot. It's, went from 22,000 at the turn of the last century to 221,000 right now based on the actual census. You'll see that our greatest rate of growth was 47% with the 1960 census. At that time, though, this area was starting to really get established in oil and gas industry and it was attracting quite a few people. You'll also notice, though, that from the 1990 census through the 2010, we basically, we, we had 10% and then we bumped up to 16% with the 2000 and we've been basically holding steady with that. The Census Bureau's projection for Lafayette Parish up through 2030 is 232,470 persons. That's, normally, most parishes I work with, if you compare the actual census count to the estimates, it usually comes in on the mid-range. Lafayette actually was outperforming the high range with the actual counts. So, we're going to be using, in your report that you have, we're using that high range. So, it's probably a very good chance that this parish is going to continue its trend on growing. It may not be at that same rate that we've seen in the past, but it is going to be continuing to grow. One of the things that we look at is outmigration and inmigration. Lafayette is experiencing inmigration right now. More people are coming in than are leaving. Now, we do have it where we, some of the people leaving are generally a little bit higher paid or have higher incomes than some of them that are coming in. So, it's not a real big difference on that, but that's one of the things we generally take in a look at. If we're losing people, what kind of income levels are we losing? If they're coming in, what kind of income levels are we bringing in? So, you'll see that probably the highest rate was coming from St. Landry to Lafayette. The average gross income was 34,600. That was about, total of about 6.68% of people moving in that were taxpayers versus 6.53% of Lafayette taxpayers moving out. And of course, you know, we've got a lot of movement with Houston and whatnot, so it's not that unusual. We do have Harris County on there because that is where Houston is, so you get an idea of what we've been looking at. We've had point 19, 0.19%, less than 1% moving in, but we had a outmigration of 0.38% going out. So, we are losing a few people to Houston, which with the consolidation, it's not, the oil and gas industry is not terribly surprising. One of the things that we also want to look at is what our general population trends have been between the last two census counts. And for that, I use Census Trac because that kind of gives me a little regional view of the parish. The areas that you see in blue, the dark blue is a highest growth area. Surprisingly, it's on the south part of the parish. Probably you'll never realize that, but that's actually where the highest growth is. The lighter blue are areas where we have the next level of growth. Then it goes down to the yellow area, which is basically 699 people below. The difference in population between 2000 and 2010. So, you'll see kind of north end of the parish has a lower, or a slower rate of growth than on the south end and on the west end between the last two census counts. We take a look at the decreases. You'll see that the central part of Lafayette Parish is where you're losing most of your population between the last two census counts. You'll see that red spot right there in the Egger Martin Zone, Broadmoor Zone, you notice your populations have been changing at those schools. Part of the reason is those areas are aging out. Those subdivisions have been well-established, been there a long time. There's not a lot of room for additional development. Kids are growing up and they're moving out, so there's not as many people per household now in those areas. So, you are going to see that. You're also seeing it up there just south of I-10 between Cameron Street and 90, not too far from Truman on that south end. You're losing, some of, some of that's going commercial. But those are generally the areas that you're looking at losing some population between the last two census counts. Count on east side, a little bit on the north side, you'll see that pink area up there around Evangeline and Acadian. One of the issues that we were running with, with the zoning plan is that where we put the fifth graders, because if you take them out of Acadian Middle School, there's not too many kids there. And I remember when I was on the board, they were hanging from the rafters at one point because that was a fast-growing area. Now, it's slowed down a lot. So, you'll see that reflected in your, in your numbers. The other thing we take a look at are with the changes in your housing. Housing increases, these are units, residential units. We look at the difference between 2000 and 2010. Again, the areas in blue are the areas that have, have the most housing growth. You'll see that purple area kind of down in the center, that's up near the River Ranch area. That's where a lot of that development took place between the two census counts. That'll be this area right there. You'll see that the Youngsville area has, has had quite a bit of development. You'll also see, though, that the west side of the parish and coming up around the Austin area has had additional housing units because there have been new subdivisions that have been developed over in those areas. So, we're looking still mostly on the south end, going over toward the west end of the parish. Here's where you see some of the areas that have lost housing units between the last two. Again, it's pretty much tracking what you're seeing on the population, kind of the central part of Lafayette. Some of these have also been issues with housing being removed, maybe commercial developments moving in and displacing some housing. But that gives you an idea where you're actually losing some of your housing. The other thing that we like to take a look at is what is the income level? And we use median household income for that because that kind of gives me an idea of where your high-income areas are that may affect whether kids go to public school or not. Because if they have a higher income level, then generally those parents are going to have options available to them that maybe other people won't. They'll be able to afford private parochial while other areas may not. You'll see that the dark blue area, the areas with the highest median income as of the, estimated median income as of 2014 from the Census Bureau. Again, it's still showing that the area on the south end of the parish has some of the highest income levels. The ones in red are the ones that have the lowest income levels based on median household income. Yellow areas are generally kind of your moderate, kind of down the middle of the road. But that kind of tells me that particularly those on the south end of town, when they, when they move there, they have family, they have kids, they have options. Whether they want to put them into public schools or they want to put them in private parochial charter. So, that can have an effect, whereas you may have growth in an area, but they may not be showing up in public schools because of the exercising some of those options. Let's talk a little bit about your school district itself now. You'll see that in 2013, your actual enrollment was 29,940. 2014, it dropped to 29,200. That's when the charter schools opened. You can see the immediate effect when those, some of those kids moved into the charter schools as they were opening up. You've been slowly recovering from that. And in 16, which is with the last actual count based, that this report's based on you, at 29,564. The projections so far are showing that you're going to increase again and then you're going to have a slight decrease over a couple of years and then you're going to start picking back up again. Basically, that's because of school-aged kids and how they're coming in on their early ages based on the survival ratio of your incoming kids. Kids that are going to be, possibly coming in at kindergarten. But even with the projections right now, you're still coming in at 2022, still a little bit below where you were in 2013, so. But if these projections hold true, then at least you'll be closer back to those original levels. But it did make an impact, but this is generally what we're looking at overall district-wide. Now, when we put the actual 2017 numbers in here, then we're going to fine-tune these numbers a little bit. And any changes that we have on the cohorts based on that, then we'll go ahead and do that. I took your projected enrollment changes and you have the charts. You have a lot of detail on the report. I'm just kind of hitting the high spots. These are the projected enrollment changes from 16 to 22 is what we're anticipating. 16 actual to 22 projected. You see the area in blue is the highest growth, which is going to be in the Linden area. After that, in green, you'll see the Plantation and Galette area. And then from there, it'd be Woodvale, which is kind of the dark yellow, and Ridge and Dusan, and then the light yellow area, I'm sorry, the, the light yellow area is going to be the next area of growth, which is going to be the Drexel and Burke and Austin areas, and then you go to the darker yellow. The area in red is where we're anticipating some enrollment drops based on what the zones were in 16. Now, we've made some changes with 17, so we'll see on those zones where we may end up rebalancing some of these and reverse some of those trends of losing enrollment. But had you done nothing, then your elementary, you're going to be a lot more kids coming in on, on the south end, more kids coming on the west end, losing kids on the north end. You see that Heights and Evangeline, Live Oak, and JW Falk, those are some of those areas that had the lower population projections. Being reflected somewhat in your school populations. They have a trend and you'll see it on the report. You can see the year-to-year change by grade level of your, of those schools from 13 to 16 and then what we're projecting based on those trends. So, those are some of the areas that we're looking at. Now, there are some other dynamics that come into play on this. One is neighborhoods aging out. Another one is, y'all have done a couple of little spot zones that aren't picked up right here. And the other one is programming changes. If you've relocated a program, if ESL's moved, if you've moved another program during those years, that's going to show a drop in one school and the receiving school is going to have an increase. So, that's picking up some of those changes, even though that may not be a district-wide phenomenon, it's going to definitely affect what the numbers are for those schools. We'll take a look at the middle school enrollments. Again, you're seeing on the, on the north end, which is a little interesting, is that Caron Crow Middle School seems to be picking up a little bit of that growth area that's coming up, kind of up on that Austin area. Definitely not only Acadian, Acadian middle side of the interstate, but definitely on the, on the west side, it looks like it's picking up some of that. The Scott Middle Zone is continuing some of its growth trends as is Youngsville Middle School. Again, you're seeing on the central part, though, in the area in red, where you're having some decreases in your middle school population coming in because those are not having the kids to put into the system now. They're, they're starting to age out. The subdivisions that are growing up around Milton and Judee's Middle are going to, are going to cause some additional growth in that area. And this is pretty much what we're looking at, at the moment with those zones. You'll see that the projected high school enrollment changes are pretty much, you know, since they aggregate those students in a larger area, sometimes the, the more subtle changes that you've seen in elementary and middle school kind of level out because you're looking at a larger geographic area. The areas that expected to grow the most actually is going to be Acadiana High. That general zone over in that area, that's followed by Como and Caron Crow High. North side is still picking up some of that area based on the old zones that had the lowest growth area. So, they're going to have that reflected in their school-aged population. Lafayette High is a little unique. Lafayette High, if you get down to the micro level, you'll see that those neighborhoods that are feeding into a lot of Lafayette High are starting to age out. There are fewer and fewer elementary kids in those areas, but you have so many programs over at Lafayette High, it's keeping those population levels up. So, that's part of the trend. We're looking at overall enrollment at the, at the schools. So, those kids that are coming in from around the parish as well as within the zone for the programs are going to be keeping up Lafayette High. If you did not have that, then that Lafayette High would not be a yellow color right now. It'd probably be, it's showing a lower growth area because of the, of the zone. So, just to give you a little high spot on the conclusions, we've peaked in 2013 and following the open of the charters, it dropped. You're going to recover somewhat is what we're anticipating through 2022. The south and the west part of the district is probably where you see the, the most growth up in those areas. And if you had not made any changes, more than likely not, you would have exacerbated the issues that the board's been fighting with for quite some time, whereas you have some schools that are under capacity and other schools are hanging from the rafters. So, rebalancing the population, I'm really looking forward to seeing how the 2017 numbers work out and see what it does. There are some caveats, though, that I think you need to be aware of. One is, we had the flood in August of 2016. That affected quite a few kids. Even though they may have been assigned to a particular school, they very well could have moved to another school because they may have been moving in at relatives or even a whole nother residential address. So, I'm hoping that the 2017 numbers are going to kind of help level out any lingering effects that we may have had with the August 2016 flood. Also, one of the other things that's affecting a little bit on your middle school numbers is that for one year, we moved middle school, I mean, moved fifth grade from, from a middle school back to an elementary campus and moving back over to middle school campus because of capacity issues. That little jog right there does affect the cohorts a little bit. When I see what the numbers actually do for 17, then I'm going to probably make some adjustments, accommodate that. But some of what you may see on your numbers and you look at those charts is that we had fifth grade move from, between elementary and middle school during this time period. We also had some program relocations at some of the schools. That's going to affect those cohorts a little bit. And again, we're, this is based on the zones that have been in effect largely since our DSAG. We've had spot zones changed a few things, but nothing that was major. So, this is basically the zones that have been around for the last 10, 15 years. The other thing, too, is that when you're trying to do the cohorts, we have a lot of choice options for kids in this district, which is good. It's great for the kids. It's just hard for demographers to be able to project exactly where those numbers are coming from because kids can move in and out of those schools fairly easily. So, those transitions, generally, we'll have to make some adjustments for that. And again, we'll do that with 17. We'll make the adjustments for the grade spans and for the final report, which you'll have a little later on this year after we update with the actual data. And we're going to bring them down to the actual school level like we have in your, in your report. You'll notice that the report, I try to make these reports so that they're easy to read, easy to understand, but I also like to have it for a tool for staff and for the board to plan for it because I break it down by school, by grade level, so you can kind of get an idea what kind of counts you can generally expect as we move forward. But as far as recommendations go, I think that it warrants it with the changes that we've had in the school district and the continued growth, that about every two years we need to take a look at this and up, update the numbers with the actual enrollments. That'll give you, kind of keep you on a five-year horizon, but you'll have those updated every two years, so your numbers will be a little bit better. So, when you're getting around to making facility decisions and whatnot, then at least you're going to have more updated numbers. It'll also take in and affect any changes that we're having from private parochial and type-two charters. If we do any tenant zone changes subsequent to the one that's going into effect now, we'll take those in as well as any programming changes. So, that's what my recommendations are. Certainly, if y'all have any questions, I can take them now. If you want to go into this in more detail, we can do that at a workshop. Or if you want to wait till the final report and then really drill down into it, we can do it at that point. It's, it's your prerogative.
Thank you, Mr. Hefner. All right, it looks like no questions today.
Good. I know Mrs. Santani's going to-
I look forward to reading it. I know you can tell that.
Yes.
All right, the next thing on the agenda are the personnel changes.
Board members, the minute, the personnel changes are attached to the agenda item, Ms. Thibodeau does have some introductions tonight. I'll turn it over to Ms. Thibodeau.
Good evening. Before I get started, I just want to give you a little update that we've hired as of this morning, 140 new teachers. We have about 35 teacher openings, teaching openings. We have hired 45 support workers and we have about 15 paraeducator openings. So, now, I'm going to introduce some real exciting, enthusiastic new administrators that we've hired over the summer. The first one is John Downs. He will be the itinerant assistant principal at Dusan Elementary School and L. Leo Judee's Elementary School. Mr. Downs has earned a Bachelor of General Studies degree and a Master of Arts degree in, from UL Lafayette. He earned an Educational Specialist degree from LSU. He is currently a doctoral candidate in the Educational Leadership Doctorial Program at LSU. Mr. Downs' teaching experience includes two years as a special education teacher at St. Thomas More High School and four years as a teacher at Milton Elementary Middle School. Mr. Downs' accomplishments include being awarded the Teacher of the Year at Milton Elementary Middle School and Sons of the American Revolution Louisiana State American History Teacher of the Year. Also, he has published an article focusing on positive behavioral interventions and supports and its positive impact on school climate and school sustainability in the cross-disciplinary subjects in the Educational International Journal. In addition, he has presented multiple times at international, national, and state conferences on BIS, corporal punishment, post-school outcomes, IEP, and smart goal writing, and transitions from secondary to post-secondary settings in special education. Congratulations to Mr. Downs on his appointment as itinerant principal, assistant principal, assistant principal at Dusan Elementary and L. Leo Judee's.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Just want to thank the, the school board members, also Dr. Aguilar, for taking a chance on me. I appreciate it. I won't let anybody down. I really want to thank my Milton family. They took me in and I'm a Miltonite forever from what I was told when I gave my resignation there. Really, I learned a lot from those administrators. Want to thank Ms. LaMaire, Ms. Fontenot, for taking a chance on me. I'm very excited for this school year. And also, my family, my wife Sarah, who's at home watching on YouTube with our one-year-old and four-year-old Harper and Iris. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Ms. Thibodeau, you can add to Mr. Downs' resume that he spearheaded the creation of a neighborhood watch in O'Callan subdivision, so Dusan's in very good hands.
Okay, I'll be sure to do that. The next assistant principal that I would like to introduce to you tonight is Beryl Wagner, who will be the assistant principal at Caron Crow Heights Elementary School. Ms. Wagner has earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Southern University in New Orleans, a Master of Arts degree from Xavier University of Louisiana, and an Educational Specialist degree from Piedmont College in Demerist, Georgia. She has taught eight years in the New Orleans-
History Teacher of the Year. Also, he has published an article focusing on positive behavioral interventions and supports, and its positive impact on school climate and school sustainability in the cross-disciplinary subjects in the Educational International Journal. In addition, he has presented multiple times at international, national, and state conferences on P-B-I-S, corporal punishment, post-school outcomes, IEP, and smart goal writing, and transitions from secondary to post-secondary settings in special education. Congratulations to Mr. Downs on his appointment as itinerant principal, assistant principal, assistant principal at Dusan Elementary and L. Leo Judee's.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Just want to thank the, the school board members, also Dr. Aguilar, for taking a chance on me. I appreciate it, I won't let anybody down. I really want to thank my Milton family. They took me in, and I'm a Miltonite forever, from what I was told when I gave my resignation there. Really learned a lot from those administrators. Want to thank Ms. LaMaire, Ms. Fontenot, for taking a chance on me. I'm very excited for this school year. And also, my family, my wife Sarah, who's at home watching on YouTube, with our one-year-old and four-year-old, Harper and Iris. So thank you again, appreciate it.
Ms. Thibodeau, you can add to Mr. Downs' resume that he spearheaded the creation of a neighborhood watch in Oak Hall and subdivision, so Dusan's in very good hands.
I'll be sure to do that. The next assistant principal is, that I would like to introduce to you tonight, is Beryl Wagner, who will be the assistant principal at Karen Coe Heights Elementary School. Ms. Wagner has earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Southern University in New Orleans, a Master of Arts degree from Xavier University of Louisiana, and an Educational Specialist degree from Piedmont College in Demerist, Georgia. She has taught eight years in the New Orleans Public School System, and one year in the St. Mary Public School System. She was an assistant principal for a year in New Orleans, and moved to Georgia, where she has been serving as an assistant principal for 11 years at Littleburn Middle School in Gwinnett County Public School District.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thibodeau. Good evening, and special acknowledgements to our school board superintendent, Dr. Aguilar, district leaders, colleagues, and stakeholders. My name is Beryl Wagner, and I am the newly appointed assistant principal of Karen Crowe Heights Elementary School. I am excited and extremely grateful for the opportunity to use my expertise, knowledge, leadership skills, and experiences to lead, empower, and support the school and school districts to improve student achievement at high levels. I am working with a wonderful principal, Mrs. Mesa, who has embraced me, and whose words and actions are laser-focused on what's best for students. I eagerly look forward to making positive and productive contributions to enhance student achievement in our school system. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The next appointment is Dawn Weemer, who will be the assistant principal at JW Falk Elementary School. Ms. Weemer received a Bachelor of General Studies degree and a Master's of Education degree from the University of Louisiana Lafayette. Ms. Weemer has served as the reading facilitator and data analyst at Falk Elementary School. She taught two years at Our Lady of Fatima, and six years at Falk, Alice Boucher, and Myrtle Place. Her most recent position was the academic content coach for ELA at JW Falk Elementary School, Alice Boucher Elementary School, and Karen Crowe Heights Elementary School. Ms. Weemer was a Lafayette Education Foundation semi-finalist for Teacher, for Teacher of the Year for two years at Fatima Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Weemer.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, Chief Samick, Chief Craig, board members, and members of our community. I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with the great students at JW Falk. I also want to thank all my past and present administrators, as well as the emerging team for their support that they have given me in this journey. Also, thank you to my family, who has given up much for me to pursue this. Thank you.
The next introduction will be Stephanie Goutreau, who will be the assistant principal at Edgar Martin Middle School. Ms. Goutreau has earned a Bachelor of Science degree in zoology from Louisiana Tech University, her teaching certificate, and a Master's of Education degree from Nichols State University. Her teaching experience includes two years in LaFouche Parish Public School System, one year in Assumption Parish School System, eight years in the Diocese of Home of Thibodeau, and seven years for St. Mary Public School System. Ms. Goutreau was awarded the You Made a Difference Award from Nichols State University, and established the Academic Success Program at Central Catholic High School, servicing students with learning disabilities. Congratulations, Ms. Goutreau.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Aguilar, and the school board members. I want to say thanks. I've had a lot of people to work under in Morgan City, and I wouldn't be here without them. That is my home, and is no longer my home. We are currently moving here. So I've had a lot of family members that have worked in LaFouche Parish School System, and then moved here, and they have retired from the Lafayette Parish. So I would say I worked under Dr. Aguilar, and I had some very, very good leaders. Molly Stedalis was one of them. And I've had the pleasure of being able to choose, to say, you know, where do I want to work, where do I don't want to work? And we're moving our family here. What I can say is, I don't know many of you, but what I can say is, Dr. Aguilar, when I spoke with him earlier, he said, "This is, it is a family." And he said, you know, "You come from different places, and they'll welcome you, just like it was at home." And I can say, it was scary to apply, but I can tell you from every one of you that I've met, it is gonna be my family. So I appreciate y'all taking a chance. I'm not going anywhere anymore, because I told my husband I'm not moving again, so we're here for the long haul. And I can tell you, Dr. Aguilar, I will retire under you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Courtney Zammatt, the assistant principal for Paulborough Middle School. Ms. Zammatt earned a Bachelor of Arts degree and Master of Education degree from UL Lafayette. She has been a teacher in Lafayette Parish for 12 years at several schools, including Green Tea Linden Elementary, Live Oak Elementary, Ridge Elementary, and LJ Alamo Middle School. She has served as a math coach for the district for three years, and as an assistant principal for two years. Congratulations, Courtney.
Thank you, Ms. Suzanne. Dr. Aguilar, board, Human Resources Department, and the Academics Department, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve the students of Paulborough Middle School as their assistant principal. I'm very excited about it, because the realization finally set in that I'm gonna continue to service the students that I started my AP career with from JW Falk, which is exciting for me. I'd like to thank all of my previous administrators, who I've learned so much from my beautiful family and my amazing friends, who have supported me. I'm sorry, I'm so excited, and I feel emotional, who have supported me endlessly. And lastly, the biggest thanks to Mr. Guillory, who had faith in my capability, and for deciding that I was the right person to help move Paulborough forward. Thank you.
Next is Catherine Guillory, the assistant principal for Judee's Middle School. Ms. Guillory earned a Bachelor of General Studies degree from UL Lafayette, and a Master of Education degree in curriculum and instruction from Northwestern State University, and another Master of Education degree in technology instruction from Northwestern University. Ms. Guillory served as a teacher at St. Michael's Catholic School in Crowley for two years, and at LJ Alamo Middle School for six years. Her most recent position has been the instructional strategist at LJ Alamo Middle School, where she has served for the past five years. Congratulations.
Board members, Dr. Aguilar, I want to thank you, and thank Ms. Fontenot, for trusting your school to me. I want to thank all of my previous administrators, I have to say, all of whom came from Alamo, because that's the only school I've worked at before now, in Lafayette Parish. They left me with a lot of knowledge and a great experience. I'd like to thank my family, because they are unbelievably patient with my passion for education, very, very patient. Good things are gonna happen in Judee's, and I'm glad to be a member of that family. I'm very excited.
Next is Heidi Broussard, who will be the assistant principal at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Ms. Broussard earned a Bachelor of General Studies degree from Nichols State University, and a Master of Art in Teaching from Louisiana College. Ms. Broussard was a teacher for five years at DF Huddle Elementary School, Vernon Middle School, and NP Moss Middle School. She has served as the Academic Behavior Coordinator at Falk Elementary School, and the Gear Up College Career Coach, cohort manager for the Lafayette Parish School System Gear Up Grant. Congratulations, Heidi.
Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, fellow leaders, board members, and guests. It's a humbling experience to obtain a goal you've worked years for, and I'm very humbled and grateful to have been afforded this opportunity. I will never pretend to know the answer to every question that will arise, nor do I promise to have an immediate fix to every problem, but I do promise this: to search tirelessly until every question is answered, to inspire those I work with, to support every teacher, listen to every student, and respect every parent and stakeholder that I have the pleasure to meet. I would first like to thank Mr. Chad Guillory and Mr. Alex Melton for being so great at your jobs, because if you guys were not as successful as you are, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to apply for your position. Yes, and that's true. That being said, Chad, I know that your dad, and Alex, I know that your mom, were not able to be here to witness this day for you guys, but I do believe that they would be very proud of the leaders that you are. I'd like to thank my family for supporting me through all the no's, to finally getting to a yes, and all of my coworkers and past and former administrators for showing me what true leadership is. Finally, I would like to thank this board, the LPSS district leadership team, but mostly Mr. Jeff DeBittas, for taking a chance on me. I look forward to being part of the Bulldog family. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Connie Fontenot, who will be the principal of Dusan Elementary School. Connie earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from UL Lafayette, and a Master of Education degree from McNeese State University. She has served for 10 years as a teacher in the Lafayette Parish School System, and has served eight years as an assistant principal with the Lafayette Parish School System. Her last position was at SJ Montgomery Elementary School as an assistant principal. Ms. Fontenot has been awarded Woman of the Year and Single Parent of the Year for the National Association of University Women. She was chosen as a Teacher of the Year nominee and Teacher of the Year at Dusan Elementary School. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Dr. Aguilar, President Morris, and members of the school board, I am truly, truly honored to serve this profession as the principal of Dusan Elementary. I taught there for nine years, and I feel that my teaching career has come full circle, because now I get to return as the principal and instructional leader. I would like to thank my loving family, who is here with me tonight, my husband, my children, my grandchildren, my parents, my sister Kim, whom I love so much, and her daughter Najah. Most of all, I would like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I would also be remiss if I would not mention the wonderful administrators who shaped and prepared me to take on this challenge. They are Keith Bartlett, Janice Moncrief, and my special friend, Ms. Janine LaFleur, who is here with me. I pledge to you that I will work with the staff, the students, the parents, and the community of Dusan. I will work just as hard as the teachers and the staff will to provide a highly qualified academic and social education to the students of Dusan. Thank you so much.
Next is Chad Guillory, principal at Paulborough Middle School. Mr. Guillory earned a Bachelor of Arts degree and a Master of Education Administration degree from Southern University. Mr. Guillory taught third grade at the university, Southern University Laboratory School in Baton Rouge for five years. He taught middle school math at Broussard Middle School for nine years. He has served as the Academic and Behavioral Interventionist and Assistant Principal at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Also, he served as assistant principal at Como High School. Mr. Guillory was awarded Teacher of the Year at Broussard Middle School. He was a LATM Math Teacher of the Year nominee and an LEF nominee. Congratulations.
It is indeed an honor and a privilege to stand here today as the principal of Paulborough Middle School. I'm so excited to get a chance to work with so many wonderful people in the Paulborough community, including the teachers, the students, all of the staff members, the parents, and the community. I want to thank all of the previous administrators I've worked under. They have given me so much, and they've guided me along my path to get to this point. I also want to thank my wife, who's here today. She's always been right there by my side. So thank you so much for making me a better person, a better husband, wow, and a better father. So thank you very much. And once again, I'm so excited about this opportunity, and I can't wait for the start of the school year. Go Tigers!
Next, I'd like to introduce Venus Swallow, principal of Scott Middle School. Ms. Swallow earned a Bachelor of General Studies degree from UL Lafayette. She earned a Master of Education degree in educational leadership from the American College of Education. Ms. Swallow served as an English teacher at Paulborough Middle School. She has served as a data analyst, academic behavior interventionist, and assistant principal at Acadian Middle School. She has also served as an instructional strategist at Scott Middle School. Her most recent position was assistant principal at Paulborough Middle School. Ms. Swallow was recognized as the 2012 Lafayette Parish Middle School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Aguilar, Ms. Samick, Mr. Craig. I would like to thank you for this amazing privilege to serve as Scott Middle's principal. We often hear the term that education can change the course of a person's life, and I'm standing here as living proof that that is exactly the truth. And that is exactly what I want to do with the students at Scott Middle. I want to offer them an opportunity to change the course of their life and open doors for them as adults. I want to thank my husband, who is not here, because he is at home with our three children, who requested that I mention that they inspire me daily. And they do. And for their patience for the many nights that I call and say, "I'm not home yet, I'll be a little late." So I thank you for this privilege, and it's gonna be a fantastic school year.
Last, I have Alex Melton, who will be the principal at Early College Academy. Mr. Melton received his Bachelor and Master's degree from the University of Louisiana Lafayette. He came to us from the Episcopal School of Acadiana, where he served as a math teacher and the middle school dean of students for 12 years. Prior to going to ESA, he served as a math teacher at Broussard Middle School and Cathedral Carmel School. His most current position has been the assistant principal at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy, where he has served for the last five years. Congratulations.
Good evening, and thank you to the board, Dr. Aguilar, Ms. Samick, Mr. Craig, and Mr. Abair, not only for the opportunity, but also for seeing the confidence, and having the confidence in my abilities to lead at ECA. I would like to also thank Ms. Ann Castile, who has grown a wonderful program at ECA, and she's left it in tip-top condition. A big shout-out, and thank you to my fellow coworkers and friends at David Thibodeau, who have not only supported me, but also put up with me for the last five years. I really appreciate it. And lastly, to my family and to the teachers at ECA, who have already welcomed me with open arms, have been so helpful. I truly am excited to get in there. We're gonna work on our strengths and find areas to grow in. And as a product of the Lafayette Parish School System, Karen Crowe High, class 1994, this is truly a humbling position for me to take, and I assure y'all I would do it with dedication and pride. Thank you, and go Eagles!
Mr. DeBittas, your references are too good. You know, these appointments, they work both two ways. You know, you can block some of these and you keep your people.
All right, so congratulations to everybody. This is the point where if Mr. Angel was here, he would say that if you have another meeting to attend, now would be a good time. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of our meeting. So I'm gonna begin reading the items on the consent agenda, and as usual, we will pull the ones that we want to discuss. There are 30 of them on the agenda, so 3.1, the 1718 district and administrative calendar revision.
Pull that.
3.2, approval of the revised social studies and physical education health specialist job description. 3.3, elementary science consumables. 3.4, addition of two pre-K French immersion classes. 3.5, bid number 17-1728, vendor request for bid- 3.5, Bid Number 17-1728, Vendor Request for Bid Award Withdrawal. 3.6, Approval of Bid Award for Food Service Sanitation Program. 3.7, Approval of Bid Award for Kitchen Equipment. 3.8, Approval of Quotes for Live Oak Elementary Chiller Replacement. 3.9, Approval of Quotes for Paulborough Middle Faculty Parking Lot Repair. 3.10, Approval of Quotes for Central Office Concrete Driveaway Repairs. 3.11, Approval of Lease of Boucher Elementary School Temporary Restroom Building. 3.12, Cooperative Endeavor Agreement for Southside High Gymnasium Floor Graphics.
Pull that, please.
3.13, Budget to Actual Reports, June 2017. 3.14, Summary of Grant Funding and Activity, June 2017. 3.15, Budget Adjustment Recognizing Anticipated Increase in Student Enrollment.
Pull that.
That was you, Justin? Okay. 3.16, General Fund Budget Revision Request, Dean of Students. 3.17, Listing of Bids Approved to Be Advertised by Superintendent. 3.18, Approved Bid Award Band Uniforms, Acadiana High School, Bid Number 30-18. 3.19, Approved Proposal Recommendation Internal Bus Cameras, RFP Number 29-18.
Pull that.
3.20, Reconsider Reclassification of Secretary One Child Welfare in Attendance. 3.21, 1718 Salary Schedule Booklet. 3.22, Revisions to Policy GBA Contracts and Compensation.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
On 3.22, would ask that that be eliminated. This particular policy has already been addressed.
Pull that, please.
Okay. 3.23, Revisions to Policy EBBH, Use of Automated External Defibrillators. 3.24, Revisions to Policy KIB Advertising in Schools.
Pull that, please.
3.25, Insurance Advisory Committee Membership. 3.26, Student and Staff Computer and Internet Use Policies. 3.27, Sprint One Million Project. 3.28.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Sorry, can we pull 3.27 as well?
Please pull that.
3.28, Mozilla Gigabit Community Fund Grant. 3.29, Approval of Minutes. 3.30, Approval of All Action. So, we have pulled 3.1, 3.4, 3.12, 3.15, 3.19, 3.22, 3.24, and 3.27.
Madam President, I move that we approve all actions, all items that pulled.
All right, second by Mr. Broussard. All right, if any members of the public have any comments on those matters that were not pulled, now would be the time to approach the podium. Any comments from members of the board?
Delete.
All right, Madam Secretary, when you're ready, we'll call for the vote.
6-4, none against.
The first matter pulled was 3.1, the 1718 District and Administrative Calendar Revision.
Madam President, with the...
One second.
Let's make a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry. Madam President, I move that the board approve the revised district administrative calendars for the 1718 school year.
All right, motion by Mr. Centany, second by Mr. Lashley.
I'm sorry, apologize. Madam President, with the adoption of the general fund budget back in June, the board voted to cut out one of those optional in-service days. District staff felt that eliminating the spring optional in-service day would be better. It was vital to have the fall optional day. Staff would actually say that the second optional day had value, but we understood we were living in the constraints of the budget. But because we do away with the January in-service, really, the spring semester moves up one day, and we're just asking approval and so that we can post that new calendar.
All right, any comments from members of the public?
Good evening. Pardon me, sinuses. Good evening, Jonathan Cole, LPAE. Madam President, our office has fielded several inquiries about this particular agenda item with questions about the reduction in the number of in-service days. And Mr. Craig was very eloquent in how he spoke about the adoption of the budget, and that's not in question, the cost-saving measures and things like that. However, Mr. Craig also said, and many members and employees in our district say that there's value to two optional in-service days. And so, the concern from a lot of people is that there's a continuing impact on our employees with regard to salary issues, salary freezes, insurance changes, as well as the ongoing financial issues with the 2002 tax. And so, that's the other side of the coin, and perhaps a compromise might be in order. You have both calendars. You have one that was adopted and submitted by the calendar committee that keeps the second day, and then you have this second item. So, perhaps we look at the numbers on August 4th, when our employees go to the optional in-service, and if the numbers are high and there's value, as our staff will tell you, perhaps we build that back in because the district looks for things that bring value to our schools and to our classrooms. And so, I would just offer that as a possible adjustment moving forward. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? All right, Mr. Centany?
Mr. Cole, are you suggesting that we, so the August 4th in-service remains, and we wait and see attendance on August 4th to determine? Okay. Mr. Craig, what has historically been the attendance levels of the second optional in-service day?
It varies, but it is less than 50% for optional in-services periodically over time.
So, what is the, so you're saying for that first before-school in-service day, that's optional? It's typically less than 50%?
No, the fall one gets better attendance. There's so much curricular and instructional information to cover. The fall in-service optional gets typically better attendance. The spring in-service, again, there's a lot of information that needs to be transmitted to the staff or the instructional staff, teachers, but attendance tends to be a little lower at that one. I would say less than 50%.
And what was, what was the date of this new one? I'm sorry.
The spring one would be, it's actually winter, January 31st.
January 31st. Are we under any pressure to make that decision now?
We are not. We, like, as Mr. Cole said, we've got a valid, effective calendar in place. We can look and see what the budget looks like. We can look and see what type of information needs to be covered, what type of feedback we get from the fall in-service. And the board, we certainly have time to bring that up in September. A few people are making plans, but that's in terms of vacations, that type of thing, but that's not typically a big vacation time. They just got back from Christmas.
So, Madam President, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, and does your second agree? Okay.
I would say we defer this item until our August 9th meeting. I move that we defer this item to our August 9th meeting and ask staff to report attendance numbers from the August 4th in-service.
All right. Do we have a second for that motion? Okay, Mr. Lashley?
If I could, could you consider the September meeting? With the option that gives us time to calculate the attendance for the fall meeting, there's very short...
Whatever's convenient for you guys is fine.
All right, so the motion is to defer to the September regular meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right. Any comments from the public on the new motion? Any additional comments from the board? And Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
6-4, none against.
All right, the next item pulled is 3.4, Addition of Two Pre-K French Immersion Classes. Justin?
Madam President, move to approve the addition of the two pre-k immersion class with, from the school, but with questions.
All right, motion by Mr. Broussard, second by Mr. Centany. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, members of the board? Mr. Broussard?
Yes. Question for Mr. Craig. How does that affect Truman registration? Is Truman early childcare or pre-k? Is it full, or did they have the option to go to Truman with the backlog or for the waiting list that we've got with the two schools or possibly three?
Mr. Broussard, this is Ms. Samick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll address the question. Truman will fill. It always fills. The effect is that we actually have a lot more requests for pre-k than we have seats available. Oftentimes, and I'm not saying this as a negative, but oftentimes, families will choose the immersion program for pre-k to acquire a seat because Truman is full, and the other pre-k classes at the other sites are also filled as well. It's not to say that once they get in, they don't stay with the program, but sometimes that's a way to get into pre-k with LPSS.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Centany?
I would just like to point out to the board members, this item came to the Finance Committee the other night, and we're doing this with money being saved from transportation. So, you'll see at the bottom that the two additional pre-k French immersion classes would come from cost center 1309, which is the transportation budget, and with the route savings we have this year, that's where this additional money is coming from. So, we are literally with this and the science consumable items that we approved earlier tonight, taking money and putting it into the classroom where it was not there before. So, just wanted to point that out to everyone.
Right, because we get no MFP for pre-k students. All right, Ms. Samick?
Yeah, and just a real positive note, I just do want to announce that with the addition of the three classes that you approved in the budget process, plus these two, with the addition of those students, 120 students, that'll bring our French immersion program in elementary school up to 917. And that's really optimistic that we can really now begin to build that middle school program and also at the high school. So, this is a step in the right direction.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Mr. Broussard?
Ms. Samick, I would ask that, I know one of the schools we approved didn't have room for additional class, but I would, I would ask that we keep in mind the numbers at Truman, and they weren't at capacity last year. So, if we can keep in mind that we want to have a balanced student population at the schools as best as we possibly can, and perhaps before we start opening up something else, we can make sure that all seats are full of what we have. Just a question.
Yes, sir, and I do appreciate that. And Ms. Dewey did text me, she's home ill, and she did want me to know that it is not full yet, and she put "yet" in capitals and letters. So, I think we do have a process in place to fill Truman as well.
Thank you. All right, any additional board comments? And Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
6-4, none against.
All right, the next item pulled is 3.12, the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement for Southside High Gymnasium Floor Graphics.
Madam President, I move that we defer this item.
All right, do we have a second from anyone? All right, motion to defer with a second by Mr. Lashley. Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Bordelon?
Members of the board, Kyle Bordelon, Director of Planning and Facilities, I respectfully request that we do not defer this item. The contractor is going to be very, ready very soon to start installing the flooring, and he needs a decision on which way we're going to go with the painting of the graphics on the floor. And the contractor is willing to donate the graphics to us, so it's not going to cost the school board any money. It's an improvement to the facility.
Mr. Centany, when do you want to defer it to?
I have no problem deferring it to August 9th. My concern is that we're selling ourselves a little short on the price of advertising on a floor. I did some research this afternoon, and it costs, it turns out the Youngsville Athletic Complex charges $30,000 for three years or five years? What'd you tell me? For five years for advertising a logo on the floor, on the basketball court there? So, it seems like I'd like to be a little more comfortable with the price. So, is August 9th too late, Mr. Bordelon?
August 9th? We could probably wait that long.
It's two weeks.
Yes, sir.
The gym's not going to open until January anyway, right?
Yes, sir, but the floor work will be going on long before that.
I'd like to amend my motion to defer this item to August 9th.
All right, do you agree with the second? All right, Ms. Lashley, new motion is to defer to the August 9th meeting. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centany, I understand that you want more information, but are there any directives that you can give staff? What are you looking for in particular?
I'd like, I'd like some kind of comparison appraisal that lets us all know that this is a fair price for the advertisement that we're giving, we're trading to the contractor for the floor. That's what I'd like to know. I'd like to be comfortable with that.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, Mr. Bordelon, did you have something else?
So, Mr. Centany, it's to my recollection in talking to Kyle, there is no money in the budget for Southside for graphics for the floor. Is that correct?
Correct. What's basically in the contract right now is just basic game lines, basketball court, two-inch stripe showing the outline of the court and those kind of basic things. In order to get the graphics package that is shown included as an attachment, LaMoyne Company is willing to donate that additional cost, which is $19,000 and some change. They're willing to donate that to get the graphics that are shown as an attachment. We were not viewing it as a pay-for-advertising type of thing. We were just looking at it as they would, they would pay that additional cost to get these graphics put on the floor for us, and in consideration of that, they would be allowed to put their company logo on the floor.
No, you're right. We are trading a consideration and receiving something of value. My concern, or at least what I want to feel comfortable with, is that we are trading something of equal value, which I, not quite there yet that we are.
And what was the Youngsville price? $30,000 for how many years?
Four, five years is what we...
Right, so that's $6,000 a year?
What we found today.
Okay, and here we're looking at about $7,600 a year. Mr. Broussard?
Do we know, Mr. Bordelon, how long, or this is a lifetime, or are we giving them a time limit? One, two, three, 10, 15, 20 years?
Mr. Broussard, this was through 2019.
Through December 2019, according to the memorandum of understanding, so about two and a half years.
So, the point, the point I'm making in this is that, yes, there is no money in the budget. This is obviously something of value. So, it may behoove us to go a different way on this. Maybe we pay $20,000 upfront and get a better price or a better term for the advertisement of the gym floor than we're being offered now. Maybe we don't. I don't know. I want to see some kind of comparison of what, what we could sell this advertising for.
All right, thank you. All right, any further questions or comments to defer this to the August 9th meeting? All right, then, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
6-4, none against.
All right, next item pulled is 3.15, Budget Adjustment Recognizing Anticipated Increase in Student Enrollment. Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that we recognize an anticipated increase of MMFP funds in the amount of $422,400 due to increased student enrollment.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Centany, second by Mr. Lashley. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Members of the board? Mr. Centany?
Dr. Aguilar, can you tell me where these new, these six teachers will be going?
No, sir, I cannot tell you where these teaching positions might be needed. We are tracking roughly 110 new registrants in the Lafayette Parish school system. Roughly 100 students registered at Southside High School that had no prior registration in the Lafayette Parish school system, plus another 10 or so with Ed-Sam. We're tracking normal enrollment for the remainder of the district. We have, we had budgeted 15 appeal slots in the budget process for additional personnel. We've used eight and a half of those appeal positions, leaving 6.5. We recognize that we'll have about 100 additional students minimum in the district. We're trying to get ahead of this curve, asking for recognition of the anticipated increase in MFP funding.
I would, I would just be remiss if I did not point out that Lafayette High School is about, this looks like 185 students over your staffing number that you guys used. There are only two high schools that are over Lafayette High and Southside. Southside's 53 over. Lafayette High is 185 over. I'd sure, sure hope that goes to the top of your list when you, when you're doing your tracking. Thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments from the board? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Six four, none against. All right, the next item pulled is 3.19, approve proposal recommendation internal bus cameras, RFP number 29-18.
Madam President, I move that the board approve RFP Evaluation Committee's recommendation to award RFP number 29-18 to Angel Tracks.
Can I get a second on the motion? All right, all second? Or Mr. Bruceard will second? All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, any members of the board? All right, Mr. Kinesik could not be here tonight, but he did have a couple of questions on this proposal that he asked me to ask. One is, Mr. Craig, I think this is you, right? All right, can you tell us what cameras are going to be placed on the bus and where?
So each bus would be, we, we basically calculated 267 buses would receive four cameras. You'd have a high-quality camera pointing out the front to capture whatever might be happening in front of the bus. You'd have a high-quality camera that adjusts for backlighting, that goes down the well so that you can see what's going on as kids enter or exit the bus. Then we'd have two buses, two cameras, I'm sorry, aimed at the kids. And there was actually some variation in the different configurations, but then that would monitor what's going on with the students on the bus.
All right, so at this point, there are no cameras that will be mounted at the back of the bus to see what's happening outside of the bus?
No, ma'am, no external cameras per se, except for the internal one pointing out the windshield.
All right, and for future, if the board decided to add that additional camera with this, with this particular company, you think be able to give us an additional?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, there were several vendors. All of them were more than willing to sell us additional cameras. And, and actually, that was a component of the rubric, that they be able to address additional concerns or additional needs in the future. That was a specific item.
Okay, and then did the, the committee look at the compatibility with the GPS systems that we previously installed?
Yes, ma'am. One of the components of the rubric was specifications. There were actually 150 items ranked at a weighted factor of .2, resulting in 32 points for that component of the rubric. And that specifically was compatibility with our current GPS was an item that was graded. And we actually had a pre-bid meeting with the vendors, and that came up as a question. And Mr. Francis with purchasing included that in the written addendum to all the vendors. But yes, ma'am, that was a consideration. And I would like to say, everybody was basically able to integrate in some manner with our current GPS.
Great, thank you. All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, then Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Six four, none against. All right, the next item pulled is 3.22, revisions to policy GBA contracts and compensation. That was one that Mr. Guidry asked. All right, if there are no motions, then that matter dies. The next item pulled is 3.24, revisions to policy KIB advertising in schools. Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that we approve revisions to policy KIB advertising in schools, the attachment that says for Agenda 72617, for clarity. Second.
I'm sorry, what was your motion again?
There are two attachments. The recommended, recommended action does not specify which one, so I'm moving that we approve revisions to policy KIB, the attachment that has for Agenda 72617 in the name.
Okay.
To be clear about which version we are approving.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? Any questions or comments from the board? There are no additional comments, I'll call for the vote. Six four, none against. All right, the last item pulled is 3.27, sprint one million project. Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that we defer this item until August 9th. This was requested by Mr. Guidry.
All right.
Second.
All right, the motion is to defer this item to August 9th at the request of Mr. Guidry. Any questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments from the board? And Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Six four, none against. All right, that concludes the business part of our meeting. Dr. Shauson?
Really, really, really quickly, I want to say thank you to staff. I appreciate y'all. Bottom of my heart. We, we're getting some temporary bathrooms at Boucher, so I just wanted to say thank you, like, thank you. Y'all just don't understand. My son goes to school there. It's not for one kid, it's for the projected 800 kids. And I don't know if anyone knows, Boucher was built for about 350 kids. So I don't know how they make lunchtime work and breakfast work. I just see them wheeling out ice chests. So they make it happen over there. So I just wanted to say thank you. And if you've ever been there, recess or cafeteria time, and you see kids lining up to use a bathroom, there, there were eight male stalls, and they were still making it work. They make it work. I mean, you would think you were at the Garth Brooks concert. So I want to say thank you. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
And members of the board, we looked at purchasing a unit because, you know, but it's about $100,000 to purchase and install. The idea, what was approved tonight is to lease this building for a year. When Milton's improvements come online, we'll move that temporary bathroom to Boucher to replace it.
All right, thank you. So that concludes our meeting. All right, all right, there's a motion to go back into regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back in regular session. All right, we have to go back to the regular agenda. There are a couple of matters we need to take some corrective action on. 3.22, revisions to policy GBA contracts to compensation. That was the matter that there was no motion, and the matter failed for lack of emotion. So I need a motion to approve that matter? So do we have a motion to approve? A motion by Mr. Bruceard to approve the policy revisions, second by Mr. Hidalgo. All right, any questions or comments from the public? All right, and the board? All right, I'm going to ask for a voice vote, Madam Secretary. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. You got it up. I don't know if everybody has their computer on, Madam Secretary. All right. Okay, put it in. All right, the next matter?
That motion, I move that we reconsider item 3.27.
All right, I need a second for the motion to reconsider?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments from the public? From the board? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was the motion to reconsider, so.
And now I move that we approve the request to submit a grant application for the Sprint One Million project.
All right, so any questions from the public? From the board?
Thank you for getting the website back up this weekend, by the way.
So, I want to make sure that we're looking at the same thing, because I'm looking at 3.27, and it says Sprint One Million project, but the description says grant application for the Gigabit Community Fund, so it's just an error in the agenda?
Yeah, there are two brands. One says Gigabit, Sprint, and the other one is Sprint.
Right, so the one I have up, the Sprint One Million, and it says Gigabit. Okay, so the one that we are approving is the Sprint One Million Fund. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and now the meeting is concluded. Thank you.